Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening. Let's see. Six o'clock. Is Cindy with us tonight, or is it still Brett?
Cindy should be here.
Cindy. Hey Cindy, do we have everybody?
We are waiting on Councilmember Shiroka.
Is he on yet, Cindy?
He is now, yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, it sounds like we have all the council members on, so we will go ahead and get started. We will call the Johnston City Council meeting. Where is it?
Work session.
Work, work session, number twenty dash twenty-three to order. Cindy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Laddie?
If.
Shiroka?
Here.
We'll begin by, we'll begin by reading the COVID-19 statement. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with Governor Reynolds' March nineteen twenty twenty proclamation, suspending the regulatory provisions of Iowa Code Section twenty-one point eight or any other statute imposing a requirement to hold a public meeting or hearing, the city of Johnston will conduct meetings electronically with the public allowed to attend per instructions denied on the meeting's particular agenda. Meeting minutes will continue to be posted for the city's normal course of business. We'll move into the agenda items. We have several this evening, so we'll need to continue to move through them pretty efficiently. The first one, for a discuss outline for the Herd Garden Development Agreement. And is that Adam?
Yes, Mayor, good evening. Cindy, if we could start out by pulling up the Erd Gardens vicinity map, please. Over the last few months, staff has been working through the proposed road design for the intersection of Merle Hay Road and Johnston Drive. This improvement's being proposed in part due to the pending Ignite project to the west of Merle Hay Road. There's also been discussions and the planning of Johnston Crossing, which is on the far east side of fifty-six twenty-five, is on the non-consent agenda for consideration this evening. And a couple of other projects on the Erd Gardens property have been discussed as the possibilities in the last couple of months as well. Hold up here the vicinity map, just so everybody has kind of the same basis point. When I refer to the Erd Gardens property, I'll be generally referring to this entire area outlined in blue. Actually, that's a little incorrect, but this property is kind of what we colloquially know as the Erd Gardens property, that is not all owned by the Denny Elwell Company, although the southern portions and most of the western portions are. But there are a number of individually privately owned properties and houses on the northern part of this general area. But for the discussion sake this evening, I'll sort of be referring to Erd Gardens as this entire outlined blue area. Cindy, if you could pull up next for me, the Erd Right-Away PDF.
Coming, apparently it's big.
Well, that's, well, that's thinking here. So with sort of all that in mind, we've sat down with the Denny Elwell Company and started having some conversations about what the impacts on this property will be over that intersection improvements. And you can see here the proposed temporary easements that will be needed or could be used for part of this construction of that intersection improvements, as well as the proposed expansion of the public right-of-way for the addition of lane and the addition of other improvements to Johnston Drive. That would be the area in red. And then you'll also see a potential road, which is part of the discussion related to the development agreements, heading north in between the three red buildings there. Then you'd see a little bit of the curve going west, and then it proceeds all the way north to fifty-fifth and potentially intersects with Jordan Court, which is just directly behind the Pereira Bread Building where the condos are. And then next, if you could pull up for me, the site tree survey Erd Gardens updated map, last one there. And then just for as a reference, and as part of this development agreement discussion, in two thousand and two, there was a tree survey done on portion of this property, the true Erd Gardens property, which is a former kind of nursery, kind of outlining some of the unique and special trees that were on this property. I will note, it's obviously an eighteen-year-old tree survey at this point. We've had Parks Department take a look at a few of those trees, particularly on the western side, just to see what's currently out there and give a few updates. You can see some of those elms are no longer present. But historically speaking, there's been three or four trees that have been kind of called out as particularly special or unique to Iowa. The European Green Beech Tree, they're on the very southern south. That's actually in the existing right-of-way, so that's on city property there. It has been trimmed over the years due to the power lines, but it appears to be in fairly good condition other than that. The catsura tree directly to the north of that, but within that temporary right-of-way or that temporary easement that would be proposed as part of this development agreement. Noted a couple of beech trees that are also directly to the west of that. And then just north of that kind of bubble box there for that beech tree, you'll see a bald cypress tree, which is also highlighted in yellow. So just want to kind of set the stage with all of those there. As far as the development agreement, as I mentioned, the intersection improvements are going to cause some medians to be installed on this property. That's going to restrict some full access onto this site. That hasn't historically been an issue because the site is primarily undeveloped from a commercial standpoint. But as we see the gateway kind of coming to fruition with the Ignite project and the proposed Johnston Crossing and a couple of other projects here, we've been encouraging the developer and had some conversations of trying to figure out how this site will orderly develop with better traffic patterns and in light of this intersection improvement. As part of that, because of the full access restrictions that would be created and in the future land use map, we do show that north-south connection. And we'd like to see a way to get that facilitated to help create some of those additional accesses to those future commercial sites. And so you see kind of the outline here, one through seven, kind of talking about both how to get that road potentially constructed, as well as how to work together with the developer to potentially, to potentially develop the site in alignment with the city's gateway plan that was put together a number of years ago. So currently, the Denny Elwell Company is in support of what we have here as an outline for that development agreement. We wanted to talk through this this evening to see where city council's preference was. There's still opportunities to adjust this and have further dialogue with the developer. But if we're in general agreement on the overarching themes of this, that will help move the Johnston's Crossing project forward here tonight, which again is on the far east side of that Erd Gardens property. And we can start drafting this into a formalized development agreement so that that intersection is ready to go and those future access to the future commercial properties are available. Kind of going through the bullet points here, what we're proposing is some cost sharing for that north-south road connection. What we would do is establish a sub-TIF area that encompasses that blue outlined Erd Gardens property. As those properties develop and in this additional commercial TIF increment is generated on those, we would set those aside into a particular fund. And at such point that the developer is ready to construct that north-south road, the city would, upon accepting that road as complete or partially complete, provide a forgivable grant for up to forty percent of that road construction costs. These grants would only use that increment within that Erd Gardens property area for the commercial projects facilitated by the developer, the Denny Elwell Company. The developer would also agree not to pursue rezoning of any of that ground for ground floor residential uses on the west eight hundred feet of the Erd Gardens. So that's south of the high tension power lines that run through the property on an east-west trajectory, or on the west four hundred feet north of those power lines. Developer would also agree not to pursue any development that's currently restricted under the property's zoning code or any convenience stores with fuel sales, adult businesses, mini warehouses, truck stops, car dealerships, or any other types of use consistent with that intensity or physical characteristic, style, or size, the purposes listed above. Going back to the road for a moment, both has done a preliminary analysis of that road connection. They estimate that just the road component construction at approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. So that forty thousand dollars would mean a maximum grant of three hundred thousand dollars from the city, rest privately funded. The forgivable loan would be provided as a lump sum to the developer, again, on that dedication of that road, if those TIF funds are already available. Those full TIF funds are not already available due to the increment generated on the Erd Gardens site. Further grants would be provided as that increment becomes available until that complete grant is completed or the development timeline is expired or the state code has terminated the TIF district. We also allow for the provision that that northwest, the north-south connection could be constructed in two phases, which might be preferable depending on how the development turns out. And then we also consider the idea of increasing that forgivable loan percentage up to eighty percent of that road cost, a maximum of six hundred thousand dollars. If that developer, if the developer causes the construction of at least fifty thousand square feet of a high-quality hotel, full-service restaurants, desirable entertainment businesses, high-quality retail, where other development is determined by the city council's discretion is to be appropriate with what the desires are within the gateway area. Again, any portion of that north-south road connection not completed by June first of two thousand and thirty would not be eligible for the forgivable loan unless this agreement's otherwise extended or modified by the city council. And the developer will dedicate at no cost to the city that permanent right-of-way, which was shown in red in the previous map, as well as the temporary easement that was shown in the yellow. And then we have in here as well that the city would cause the clearing of the trees within that permanent right-of-way and that temporary easement, with the exception, if possible, the catsura tree, which is located near that intersection, was highlighted on the southwestern portion of the property. It's also presumed that that green birch, which is in the existing city right-of-way, need to be removed as part of the road project. But my understanding is FOTH is looking at an option, whether that can be avoided. But based on the preliminary information, it sounds like that might be challenging. Final note there is the forgivable loan would be repaid by the city in full or in part at the city's discretion if developer was in violation of the terms of this development agreement. So again, this is the tentative outline for what we might hope to achieve with moving forward the development on the Erd Gardens property. It has been undeveloped for about twenty years now, for the most part, since the former nursery closed. There's a few reasons for that, but there have been a number of projects proposed over the years. But again, hopefully with the movement of the Ignite project and some other initiatives in the gateway, we're starting to see some more activity on this. And with those intersection improvements, the timing's sort of right to resolve a number of the issues that are sort of outstanding on this property to help facilitate those transitions and the road improvements. So I'll pause there, see if Mayor Council have any questions.
Adam, I think you probably said this, but is, you've had conversations with the Denny Elwell Company, and are they generally agreeable to what's been proposed here?
Yes, staff has sat down with Chris Murray, and he is supportive of the development agreement that was outlined.
Mayor, do you have more questions?
Go ahead. No, 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 go ahead.
So can you, Adam, can you just outline a little bit what the, so you've got kind of obviously that yellow rectangle kind of on the west end going north-south? What's, what is kind of the need for that temporary easement? What's the purpose of that temporary easement?
Sure. So the temporary easement north on Johnston Drive is really needed to facilitate that road construction. There's also typically a need for some mobilization area to allow for equipment storage and the improvements in the adjoining area. The Elwell Company was willing to provide that space along the road front. So the general size of it is sort of driven by what FOTH believes is needed for mobilization area. The specific location of it all is sort of being determined in part just by what's convenient and what the preference was by the Elwell Company.
Okay, that's helpful to know. And so in the, in your, kind of the bullet point summary, you talk about tree removal in that area. Is, basically, is the intent of that language sort of that if there's a need to remove trees in that area, that the city would bear the cost of that? Or is it, is it, is the idea to remove all of the trees in that area? Because it's a little unclear to me from that bullet point what the intent of that section is.
The intent is to clean up that area to create the sightlines into the property. Again, we've had a number of projects proposed in the area that would require most of these trees to be removed presumably otherwise, but also protect some of those previously noted trees that have historically could have been marked as special. So that's why that catsura one in particular is noted as likely not to be removed. I don't have the specifics from FOTH of whether there's some elevation changes on the property between what that new intersection road design and the existing terrain on the Erd Gardens might require some soil removal or addition to that property. But my understanding is they probably would not be necessary, particularly within the yellows areas, the yellow areas. But as part of the deal to get that temporary easement for that mobilization and as part as the overall plan to redevelop property, that was the area that was outlined under the development agreements for the temporary easement area and that the city would do the tree removal for that mobilization area to be ready and accessible by the construction crew.
So the development agreement requires that all trees, with the exception of the catsua tree to be removed, is that what you're saying?
Correct. That's what's being proposed under the outline.
Okay.
Adam, you said that FOTH is taking another look at the Green Beech. They're close to Johnston Drive. It looks like it's very close to the existing road, so. You know, it does appear to, it's going to be difficult to save that tree. But why don't you, can you, can you talk a little bit about, a little bit more about, you know, the construction that will occur there and what the, what the likely impact is going to be?
I might ask Matt to provide that. I think he probably has some additional.
Okay.
Knowledge and detail.
Yes, we've, FOTH's looked at this on a preliminary basis and looked at doing, we've got some turning movement issues coming from the east-headed southbound, and we get quite the traffic backup peak rush hour times. It looks like we would need to add a dual left-turn lane and then add a through right-turn lane there on the north side. So that's what currently FOTH is looking at. I know when we met last week, they were going to take a look based on some questions from a couple of council members of trying to save that Green Beech tree there in the right-of-way. With that information that we got just last week, I think they'll be taking a look at that this week and reporting back to us.
This is probably a question for Councilwoman Martin, but what, what is the life expectancy of these trees?
Um, the shingle oak could live for, you know, a hundred years plus. I don't know what the life expectancy of a European beech tree is. We all know that those trees are already probably seventy-five years old. And they seem to do, seem to be doing okay. The same thing with the cypress. It could live a long time, although we had a very nice cypress at Dewey Park that was, that just died for no good reason that we could tell a couple of years ago. There's no, no, there's no telling how long they could live. The, these, there was four trees. We've got, we've all received this email from Virginia Silberg talking about four significant or landmark trees. One of them is this shingle oak that is on the plan. And she's also provided some documentation from two thousand and three that seemed to show a willingness on the part of Denny Elwell's company to preserve these trees. And as we talked, Mayor, in our public works meeting, I mean, I think that these trees were a big factor when this property was sold and Herd Gardens moved away. There was a lot of community support for saving trees on this property, that they were special. So my thoughts on this, Mayor, is regardless of how long they could maybe live, I still think that they're, they're, you know, they're part of our history. At one time, Johnston had several, and still does, but had several nurseries here in town. In fact, we were the place to go for a lot of nurseries. We had, the town was based on some very nice topsoil and Herd Gardens, Miller Nursery, PBS, which became Claytonburg. All of those places ended up in Johnston, and we kind of have a history of support for this oper, you know, nursery operations, trees, et cetera. So I'm going on and on. I don't mean to, but I'm just going to say that I really support doing all we can to protect these trees. I would think that if we're going to have a temporary easement for future development, it would not be hard for these trees to have a protection fence around them. Why cut them down before we know exactly what the final development of this property is? To have them cut down because of a temporary easement for a road project, when it looks like there's a lot of space there, that would seem to me unfortunate. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilwoman Martin, you're, you're absolutely right about the history of the conversation around these trees. And that was part of the reason why I was asking about the life expectancy, because I think those conversations took place like twenty years ago. So I thought, how long can these trees live? I mean, they were mature, they were old, mature trees then, so.
Well, and Mayor, if I just could jump in, I do think that this is an issue in which you may have some history with, but you're probably the only one among the elected officials. I mean, I, you know, I, we drive by Herd Gardens.
Right.
You see big trees out there, you see that they've been fenced off, and you've heard, oh, those are protected. But, but, but as far as any more detailed discussion that's happened in the council level in the last nine years, this is really the first time that's happened. And so I think it's a little, we're all acting under a little bit of, we don't all have a lot of background information. And so I guess the, the question, I certainly, from what Councilwoman Martin has said of looking at identifying individual trees and trying to protect those individual trees, I certainly don't have a problem with trying to do that. But, but I, but when we, but my concern is when it, when that goes from identifying certain trees, such as the, the shingle oak, and then kind of, but then granting protection to all the trees in the area, that I, I'm a little concerned that that might be a slippery slope that, that in the end, you know, where do we draw the line? And so again, that's, you know, obviously, members of the community, others, you yourself, maybe some city staff have some familiarity with kind of the background and history of this, but that, but that's where it sort of stops. And so I guess two things. One, I think we all need to have a little bit better understanding of kind of what the, what the, what the knowledge level is. And I guess, two, I'm certainly willing to, to look at protecting, you know, whether it be the bald cypress or the shingle oak or the catsua tree. But, but when it goes to all the trees in the, in the, in that yellow shaded temporary easement, that makes me a little nervous because I think then that makes it very challenging to accomplish what needs to accomplish as part of either the development of Herd Gardens or the, the road construction that needs to happen in this area. So fine, I have faith that between the city staff, elected official, interested citizens, the developer, we can, we can find what that common ground is. But I, but, but I think we need to, we've got a ways to, I wouldn't say a ways to go, but, but I think we need to kind of take all those voices into consideration.
I agree with you, Councilmember Cope. I think that, you know, it probably wouldn't take staff very long at all to put together a very short memo on, you know, what the conversation was at the time twenty years ago, when, when these, when the property was transferred and there was some discussion about these trees at that time. If I'm recalling the situation, and again, I'm starting to ramble a little bit as well. But if I recall, if I recall what, what, what happened at the time was when Herd, when Herds owned this property and had their, their nursery there, they planted these trees knowing that they were unique and unusual to Iowa. And, you know, that, you know, there was some, some thought that they may live or they may not live. And obviously, they, they have, and they've done well. And, and it's just, I've always thought it's unfortunate. They put it right at the location that they did. If they'd have moved it back further on the property, we probably wouldn't be having these conversations over and over again because they'd be in a location that isn't always, you know, where development will occur, whether it's road or otherwise. But, but these were, these were trees that were particularly, especially planted by them, knowing full well that they were not native to Iowa. And, and so that's, that's what does make them special, that they, that they have thrived in an environment that they, that, that wasn't natural for them. So is that correct, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Martin?
Um, yeah, they're not that unusual nowadays. The, the beeches are for sure, for sure. The shingle oak, maybe not as much, or the bald cypress. I would say that I, I actually think that, I agree with a lot of what Councilman Cope said about blanket statements on tree removals. I think my, my point was about the temporary easement was that it's a temporary easement to facilitate a road project, and they do need space to perform their operations. But to go ahead and say, you know, clear the site of trees, except for maybe the catsura tree and the shingle oak, so that they can have room, seems to me shortsighted in terms of we don't know what the final development is going to be. And I think, Councilwoman Cope, I think that the city and city staff can take a look at those trees. And if it's an ash tree or white pine or some less-than-healthy tree that, or, or if it's, you know, there's no way the road project could go in without this tree in the end being removed because it's in the actual way of the road, I would agree that that's a necessary removal. But for, just to open the site up to facilitate moving equipment around and then cut trees to make it convenient, that is where I'm saying I would be opposed to that, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think, I think that our two perspectives are pretty, pretty comparable and reconcilable. So I would, I have faith that, and I, Adam, Adam is not on video, so I have no idea, he may be throwing up his hands and discussing this discussion or maybe nodding, saying, yeah, this isn't a problem, hard to tell because he's not willing to show his face. But hopefully, 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 he's, he's nodding his head, saying, yeah, this, we can, we can work this all out, and we're not talking about something that's too difficult, so.
First words, Tom.
I'm sorry?
Fine, you can see my face.
There we go.
So, yeah, I guess maybe in summary here, this is just a discussion item tonight. What we're looking for is really general confirmation that the overall development agreement is, is more or less acceptable, subject to working out some additional details to the city council so that the Johnston Crossing project move forward this evening. I don't think there'd be an issue to, if there's that general support, sit back down with maybe a small group in the developer and try to identify specific trees or a more specific plan for tree removal as part Uh, sit back down with maybe a small group in the developer and try to identify specific trees or a more specific plan for tree removal as part of the intersection project. In advance of moving forward with the the development agreement itself, which has not been drafted at this point.
And I would also say, Adam, that I appreciate that that the developer is willing to have these discussions. As opposed to, you know. There has been other. Developments that trees get removed before they start talking to us and. And I appreciate that they recognize that these trees are important and worth having a sit down discussion. To clarify. What, you know, what, what priorities and boundaries around them. That they're willing to have that conversation. I really appreciate.
Yeah, they've, you know, they've protected the trees for for twenty years now. And they've always indicated during discussions as far as long as I've been here, when potential projects have come up that. You know, they do want to work to try to protect them the best as possible, but just looking at that survey of the the trees there, there's, there's a lot of trees and it's. Some prime commercial property. So it's. It's inevitable that a number of these trees will be removed, but I think we have a good partner as far as. Trying to work through saving as many of the the important ones or the unique ones as possible.
And Adam, um, I know Tracy went through that area a little bit today in a short period of time. Um, certainly if the developer would like us to assist a little bit, um, we can certainly go back through the area. Um, Tracy already noted some trees that have already been eliminated that are on the site that are indicated on this. As well as that entire group of lindens are actually beached, they're not linden. So there are some. Um, errors with this, but also some areas, since it's been eighteen years ago, that trees don't exist anymore that are indicated here. So. We can certainly help with that process and and in in some ways, maybe even get some of the tree board members to help out with it, too.
Mayor, if you may, I provide just a little more history as well.
Sure.
Okay, just just to recall, after Heard Gardens vacated the property, there was another developer that I can't remember if they actually purchased it or was thinking about purchasing it and. And they were looking at doing more of a clear cut of the property to prepare it for development. And that's, I think, where a lot of this activity began. And then in the meantime. Elwell purchased the property. And again, I don't remember if it was from Heard Gardens or from the. The the group that was sort of in the middle there, but and they have protected the trees as as was identified almost twenty years ago. For the last twenty years. So I know they've made that, they made that commitment and and have lived up to it. Now there's some development pressure. Activity opportunity, I guess, on this property, but but there was an effort. Twenty years ago to to do what we could to protect this as long as we could from another developer that. It was active and and had the potential of purchasing this property at at that time.
Anything else on this? Item.
Yeah, I guess maybe I'll just, trees aside, is there any other comments or concern with the other elements of the outline development agreement?
I think it's great, Adam.
Yeah, I would agree.
I'm not hearing any disagreement, Adam.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item four B, and I'll just remind everyone, we have just thirty minutes to cover now. Before remaining items, so we'll need to move, uh, move along efficiently. Item four B, review the stormwater utility financial analysis and capital improvement program.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and councils. This is Dave Wording, Community Development Director. Matt Stoffel is also on the line. Uh, Matt is our financial advisor with PFM. And we are required by ordinance to do an annual fiscal analysis review of our stormwater utility. Uh, which was created back in two thousand and twelve. Um, and we usually do that at the same time that we review and update our capital improvements program. So. Excuse me, Cindy, if you want to just open the stormwater cash flow document. Uh, so the Stormwater Committee, uh, which includes council members ready and Martin, Mayor Darren Feldmet back in. Uh, November, I believe, and and reviewed this. Um, as council may recall, we've generally followed a a pattern where every other year we do an increase in our ERU or equivalent residential unit. Stormwater utility rate. Uh, this is our off year, so we did do a rate increase last year. We are not proposing a rate increase this year. Uh, but we do do still want to go through annually and make sure that our fund is in good shape. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over. Uh, to Matt to do a quick review of the of the model that he's created here, and then I can quickly touch base on the capital improvements program.
Uh, yeah, thanks, David. Um, I'll just speak to kind of the highest level and I would say just. Overall, the the fund is in really good shape. Uh, staff has been able to kind of move projects. Uh, around to kind of. Align with the revenue streams. So for the unaudited twenty twenty results, uh, the stormwater fund generated about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, in terms of operating expenses, the the goal of this fund was to keep the operating expenses relatively low. So. Uh, in fiscal twenty twenty twenty, there was about three hundred and sixteen thousand. Uh, most of those related to engineering expenses and then the depreciation of the assets. And so the debt service is used to fund from the projects. And so in in twenty twenty, there was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of debt service. From a revenue perspective, and then there's also some general obligation bonds that. That we transfer out of this fund to help offset stormwater projects that are paid for. That would otherwise have to be paid for by property taxes. And so in fiscal. Twenty twenty, there was four hundred and twenty six thousand dollars transferred into the. Uh, the debt service fund to offset property taxes for those projects. So Cindy, if you want to go to the next page. So there there's a lot of activity happening in this fund at the moment. The east of Merle Hay projects are flowing through here, but also. Um, there's several other projects that are kind of in detail below. Um, but overall, the fund drew down cash by about five hundred and eighty two thousand dollars in twenty twenty. So you can see the ending cash balance is four hundred and ninety two thousand, which represents. About a year and a half worth of operating expenditures. And so we've, we've kind of targeted. Five hundred thousand is kind of the number. That staff is comfortable with. As a target to determine which projects do we fund with cash? And which projects do we use the SRF program for and borrow from? So as cash builds up, we'll identify projects that can be funded with cash and and to avoid the the debt service. So if you go to the next page, um, this is a list of the capital projects and the and the projects that are on the top. Are kind of color coded by which loans. And the source of funding that that they use, but you can see, um, most of the projects kind of start out. As funded by debt service, uh, because then you can spread the cost across the twenty years. Um, as opposed to drawing down cash immediately, but as we're able to, we pull down projects. So for example. Um, the North Glenn Stream improvements. Were done this year, uh, on a, on a cash basis to kind of pull down the cash balance in that fund. Um, we've got a few other projects identified out there in terms of cash, but as the cash balance will build, we'll identify other projects that are out in the future years to to pull down as well. So. I guess I'll stop there. That's kind of the the quickest look at where the funds at. I think it's in really good shape. I think staff is doing a great job managing. Um, the projects and within the revenue stream. And I I guess I'll turn it back over to you, David, if there's anything that you wanted me to mention that I didn't happy to speak to. Other aspects of the cash flow.
Thanks, Matt. Uh, yeah, a couple of things I'd highlight, um, just as a reminder. The of the revenue that comes into the fund, we are primarily using that revenue to fund capital projects. So either through. You know, Pago or paying cash for those projects, those capital projects. Or to pay debt service towards projects that we fund through an SRF loan. Um, we do set aside ten percent of the budget approximately each year or revenue each year for operations and maintenance. That does not include staff time or other things that we were already doing prior to the establishment of the of the stormwater utility, such as street sweeping or other other things. That includes sort of regular ongoing maintenance that's required for our stormwater management system. And then we also set aside one percent of our revenue or about ten thousand dollars a year for our homeowner grant program. So we are low in the fund as far as what we what we allocate towards operating and operations and maintenance. So that I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions on the fund itself, the utility itself, or the the capital improvement. List of projects, we did only add one project this year. The rest of the projects were already in the CIP last year. And that's a project. Um, related to Terrace Drive Storm Sewer, which was on line eighty of that spreadsheet. Um, and that's needed to address some localized flooding that we've been experiencing there as a result of an undersized storm sewer. Uh, we do. In cooperation with Matt Griner and his staff at Public Works, we do review each of these. Projects each year to sort of see what condition they're in, how rapidly they're changing. As well as a number of other ones that we're continually monitoring where we know we're having erosion issues to determine which ones sort of need to. Rise to the top or or get added to the CIP. So this year we're only adding. Uh, one, one new project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any question. As Matt said, the. Fund, we believe, is in really good shape. We're not proposing a rate increase and. Um, aside from a couple, one new project, a couple of minor adjustments, timing wise, no real changes to the CIP from last year.
Also, any questions?
So, Dave, when you talk, when you talk about adding a project, I'm just looking at, I think, one of the charts here that. Matt presented. So the like the terrace drive, that's terrace drive storm sewer. So that's the new project you're talking about adding. Is that right?
Correct.
And that would be funded, looks like it's funded out of pay as you go in FY twenty one and twenty two.
Yeah, the the design is in twenty one, twenty two, the the construction is in twenty two, twenty three.
Yep.
And so it looks like, so kind of on the page you go, we don't sort of plan those as far out in advance as we do on the bonding, because bonding, we have projects. That planned out sort of through twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven. And then the pay as you go is a little bit more, we we kind of plan those at a little shorter time horizon. Is that right?
A little bit. We also look at, um, we do have to meet certain criteria to use the SRF funding. And so sometimes the like in that particular case, and then the. The Point Vista Park case, um, we're really addressing sort of localized flooding issues that. Are harder to meet the SRF criteria. And so it's just easier to pay for those projects out of cash if we're able to. Uh, the other thing, and Matt alluded to this, as we get out into later years. Um, I can assure you, some of those projects will drop down under cash. We just tend to leave them up and assume that they're going to be. Uh, funded by debt. And then as we get a little bit closer, we, as we look at the 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 fund balance and the health of the fund. If we feel we're able to, we'll move some of those down and 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 use Pago as much as we can.
Thanks. You know, I think one of the, of all the things you kind of indicated today, one of the things that was most interesting is the fact that basically by having. This fee in place, we're able to help divert about what four hundred thousand dollars or so of that otherwise would have been paid out of property taxes. To help sort of pay for these stormwater projects. And so it's a, it's a. Fee that although nobody really likes fees, it does help on the property tax side to make these important infrastructure improvements. So I appreciate you pointing that out.
Any other comments or questions for David? Now, are we ready to go to the next agenda item?
I am ready. Cindy, if you want to just bring up that document.
For review, design concepts for park entrance signs and terrace park signs, John.
Yep. Um, basically, over the last year or so, we have been working with Shive Hadry, trying to look at. Uh, signage, um, not only at Terra Park, but throughout our park system. Um, we currently have three different styles and three different logos that are currently present within park signage in the city. So. Looking to standardize what we're doing. This design concept that you're looking at has been reviewed completely by the park board, um, has been given the thumbs up from them. Um, I've been working some with Janet and she's been reviewing these as well. Um, the key to these is to look, uh, uh, fresh and sharp, but at the same time utilize logos. At Terra Park, we're looking at really three major different types of signage. One would be the large entrance sign. Which is going to kind of blend in somewhat similar to what the overall building feel is. That's why you see the limestone and kind of the the. The wood appearance of the sign. The second type is park information, um, giving locations and some specific information about Terra Park. And then the third would be wayfinding, um, helping to direct. People throughout the park and and then also located on located on the trails so that. People coming into the park kind of have a good feel of where to go. People that want to divert Terra Park altogether can go behind on the the trail system. So those are the the Terra Park. Um, on that first screen, you can see an example of Providence Point. That would be the typical. Type park signage. Um, these would be present at the major entrances to each park. Most parks only have one, but there are a couple of parks that would have two that would need this. Um, then the final sign you see to the, towards the far right is the recognition interpretation. Um, this, we've been working some with the representatives from Corteva that helped designate. Um, the seventieth seventieth Avenue access as the Shaquen Memorial Access. Um, but this signage would be present there, um, at the entrance of of the seventieth Avenue access. So. With that. I will take any questions that you may have. I know that's kind of a quick note, but I know we also have other items to get to, so.
So, John, the, for example, the pedestrian wayfinding, that that. That would be placed along the trail system or?
Along trail systems near parking lots. There's really two different types of wayfinding. Um, you have the kind of the major in park wayfinding, and then you have the smaller trail type wayfinding where it directs you.
Yeah. So here's, here's my question, and it relates back to. A comment that I made earlier this year about the kiosk that are in the Beaver Creek Natural Resource Area. So I'm, I'm expecting that we'll see some of these pedestrian wayfinding signs out in the Beaver Creek Natural Resource Area.
Correct.
Okay, and so what, what are we going to do with those kiosks, those educational kiosks?
We did recently clean them back up. We're going to try to establish some type of plantings around them that is more natural in nature, but not something that needs. A hundred percent maintenance. Um, the area floods in normal years, the area gets wet and floods pretty much annually. Around a lot of those different signs and trying to keep the. The current vegetation that was planned there is is virtually impossible. So we're going to come up with a better system of of the vegetation and the material that are around those signs.
That would be great. I I think that we put this, I mean, I, I, I'm very supportive of putting up the new park and and trail signage. Um, and I just want to make sure that, uh, after we go to that effort and that expense, that we're not overlooking the kiosk. And detracting from what we're trying to accomplish with a new signage.
Yep, this new science should add to it. In fact, uh, the group that from Shive Hadry that is working on this also did those signs. Um, so they understand the connection. Um, we're also working with a group with the, uh, the newly installed OXPO from this past year. Um, looking at the possibility of some signage associated with that OXPO, especially educational signage. And we're looking at trying to conform all these, uh, this signage to make sure that it looks uniform through that region.
Great. Any other questions for John?
So, John. Sorry, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Scott. You go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say quickly, um, no questions for me, um, but just something maybe to consider on the. Um, signage itself is. You know, I think it could be neat if, um, you know, we worked with Janet or something.
you know, I think it could be neat if, you know, we worked with Janet or something to create some kind of, even if it was just a unifying hashtag, something that would be able to link all of the parks. Mainly, I'm thinking as people go to these, see the signs, if we give them a hashtag, even if it's like hashtag Johnson Parks or something, then I think that just encourages the exploration. People see it online. They find another Johnson Park that maybe they didn't know about. And, you know, maybe they see something for the Beaver Creek Water Point Access, find out about Terra Park, and then, you know, attract more people to visit our parks and, you know, that type of thing. So just something, a suggestion maybe to consider.
Sure. Yep, we'll look into that. Well, we're also looking at, most of these signs don't show it on here, but we have discussed with the with the designer that it'd be nice to have the address, the official address of each park present on these signs. So when people attend the park, they do know the address in case there's an emergency or something that they can give that address.
Great, thank you.
So my my question kind of has to deal with, and I don't know, Cindy, if you're, maybe can you scroll back to the the Providence Park one? Yeah, right there. So these these, it looks like their leaves, these kind of, the the, I'm trying to figure out what the pattern here is inside the green. It looks like kind of leaves that are sort of blowing around. Kind of is, what's the thought process on that? Is that sort of somewhat similar to our logo that has the leaves from the trees? I was just trying to figure out what the tie is there, what, when I first saw it, it looked like teardrops a little bit to me. They're green, so that helps not to draw that. But I was trying to figure out what we were trying to convey with that kind of visual.
Yeah, it, the intent was to, once again, Johnson being a green community, we wanted to give the impression of of leaves there without having the having the full tree there. So yes, those are intended to be leaves. We can work with them to make sure that they look a little bit more convincing as leaves.
I mean, it's 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 probably fine. I just it wasn't, I wasn't overly power, overpowered by it right off the bat, but it's not horrible either. So.
I like your suggestion, John, because I, you know, I didn't really identify them as teardrops until Councilman Coke said that's what he first thought they were. And now that he has said that, that's what I see is teardrops. So, yeah, even if it's abstract, at least to, you know, make sure that when people see it, they they see leaves and not something else. Any other comments or questions?
I have a quick question. When do you think this will be installed?
What we're looking for is is a part of bringing it to you guys is just getting final feedback. So if there's any modifications to the design, we can do such. We're looking to get this bid out this winter time. And the hope is right away in the spring, once we can get the footings put in, that they'll, it'll go in probably April or May.
Thank you.
Anything else? If not, let's move on to item four D. Consider chapter one eighty point two seven of the City of Johnston Code of Ordinances as it relates to proposed development north of Northwest Seventy Eighth Avenue and west of northwest Northwest one hundred and fourth court for property to be annexed into the City of Johnston.
Yeah, that would be me, Aaron Wolf, presenting on this topic. Cindy, can you please open the vicinity map? Okay, so we have a developer who is looking to develop property that is north of Northwest Seventy Eighth Avenue and west of Northwest one hundred and fourth court. The properties along Northwest one hundred and fourth court are the Chesterfield Heights subdivision that was approved, gosh, I don't know, six, eight years ago. And it's the same developer. He's looking to have a second phase of development to the west here. The property that that is fronting Northwest Seventy Eighth Avenue is a horse farm and stables. And he's looking to subdivide off twenty acres at the rear of that property for a phase two of of his previous development. And Cindy, if you would, could you pull up the concept drawing that he submitted for the subdivision? It would be the concept aerial that's there. There we go. And so here, it's just flipped the other direction to the to the left side of the screen would be the north. And Northwest one hundred and fourth court, again, that would be the street there that you see at the at the top of the screen. That has access back to Northwest Seventy Eighth Avenue. The stub street that you see here is Northwest Eightieth Avenue. And the developer would like to extend that to the west and bring a cul-de-sac off of that extension. And he's hoping to serve twenty eight homes. And he's looking for some preliminary input on this development concept, particularly how this extension of the public street relates to the to the code of ordinances. We do have some code language that stipulates a dead end street can only serve two hundred and fifty average daily trips. But the council does have the authority to approve a subdivision that creates a greater trip load when development occurs in phases. And there is potential for a dead end street to connect back, create a second access in the future. And so if we can keep looking at that concept plan that we just had up. Northwest one hundred and fourth court, again, it's it's basically a temporary dead end. It terminates in a cul-de-sac, but comes back down to Northwest Eightieth Avenue that has potential to extend further westward and eventually wrap back around to Northwest Seventy Eighth Avenue. So there's potential in the future to get a second access to this development. What we're looking at here is is basically a temporary temporarily exceed the average daily trips for this for this street. And there is precedence for doing this. Especially when we look at development that occurs in phases. And the developer is currently in his due diligence period for this property. He's looking for your comments and your willingness to temporarily exceed that average daily trip load. And again, this is something that we routinely do, but I understand that he, you know, before he moves forward, he would like to hear comments from the council. I do believe we're joined by the developer tonight and his consulting engineer, if you have questions for them.
Aaron, this is Councilman Coke. I don't have any concerns with what what the developer is proposing, given kind of our history of allowing similar type projects throughout the community. I guess the one question I would have is, do we, from a city standpoint, you know, basically, you're indicating that the road that runs will run east, west, a stub road, or not, maybe that, I think he's not risen right, but that connects the development from the east to this development. Obviously, that's running east to west. So at what do we have any expectation for when the land to the west of this might be annexed into the city? Is that a long, long ways off? Because if it if it is a long, long ways off, or is it, or do we have a sense it's maybe more in the ten or fifteen year range?
Yeah, you know, it's really depends on private, private willingness to do so. You know, that is a separate property owner, and I don't know what their willingness is to to develop that property or the timeframe at which they're they're looking to develop it. So these things are really, they're really kind of hard to say.
Right.
So I don't know that I have an answer for you.
I guess either way, I'm I don't have a problem with what the developer is proposing here.
Any other comments?
It sounds like there's not a whole lot of concern with this proposal, and that's what I'm looking for. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Aaron. Moving on to item four E. Distribution of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget workbook.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just briefly want to point out that what is included are budget documents you would have seen in the past. I do have electronically, I've separated them by different PDFs. So when we're having our work sessions, hopefully, if you're looking at the electronic version, it'll be a little easier for us to find the the pages you're looking at. But there really isn't much difference of anything that I've included in here this year. If I'd had time, I was going to talk a little bit about the CEP, just to lighten the load on our budget workshop meeting, but we're already at our seven o'clock hour. So I don't know if any of you have any questions. It is a two-year budget. We have twenty one, twenty two, and twenty two, twenty three. There are decision packages for both years. So make sure you're looking at the heading that says what year that decision package is in. We'll probably at our special council meeting, really only focus on the decision packages for twenty one and twenty two. But you'll see that they might have other requests out there coming in the next year as well. Are there any quick questions before we go to our regular meeting? And of course, when you get to looking at the book or or get to looking at any of these files, please call me, email me, phone me, whatever you need. If you have questions, I'll be happy to straighten any questions out you may have.
So Teresa, the the special work session is next Tuesday at five thirty?
It is.
So how much of this material are we planning to cover at that time?
I'd like to say we cover all of it, but we never seem to get all the way through it. And then some department heads or departments will fill in on work sessions coming up at the second meeting in December or the first couple of meetings in January. I I won't have any valuation information here at all till January or any of that type of things. But we'll just see how far we get. I don't believe that the committee has decided yet. I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn. I'm not sure if we're meeting virtually or in person next Tuesday. Either either one will work on on my my part. So.
Just for the council as well, we've asked the department heads to be very succinct in their comments, just really focusing on the changes that they're proposing in their budget, whether it's, you know, going, you know, a positive or negative direction, I guess, and focus on presenting their decision packages. So hopefully, we can get through most of these. It's really sort of a high view. There's a lot of detail there, but overall view of the budgets and what's being proposed and really having the department heads focus for you on what some of the changes or what they're proposing that may be different from previous budget years. And and then, as as Teresa mentioned, well, there's going to be probably a few or even a few issues we might, we're going to break out and talk about it, other work sessions between now and our first work session on the budget and that'll be the second meeting in February, or excuse me, second meeting in January.
Well, I see we've, we have three hours scheduled for the work session next week, and there's a lot of information to cover. So so our department heads will have to be concise if we're going to try and cover as much territory as Teresa wants us to. Any other comments or questions on on this item? If not, it is just a little bit past seven o'clock, so we will go ahead and adjourn the work session and join each other again in a minute or two when we get started for the regular council meeting. We are adjourned.